The meeting is called to order. Southampton Town Planning Board Thursday, September 13, 2018. The Secretary will call the roll.
Chairman Finerdy.
Present.
Vice Chair Blaney.
Present.
Secretary is here. Board Member LaFaro.
Present.
Board Member Zuccarelli.
Present.
Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Burke.
Present.
We're all here, sir. Very good. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any ministerial plea? Unfortunately, no. No minutes this meeting. Okay. There, do you have any minor lot line modifications or should we just jump in? Go in order. Why not go in order?
We'll go in order. Unless we had this on, it's October, August finding. Consideration of the finding statement. You have a consultant on project? Based upon feedback from the board, before you, I'm going to give you two proposed finding statements. One, it talks about the maximum campers, the 360. The other, an alternative, which is labeled alternative, is going to refer to an average of 360 and a maximum of campers of 420.
Otherwise, it's the same? So, one clear? Did you say that again? One is?
I get them out.
They said it wasn't on.
She's passing them. Oh, oh, oh. I can see.
Just so you know, these are... So, the document, the one, the 360 was given to you on Friday, and the one with the alternative, which is the average of 360 and the max of 420, was given to you today.
Are there any other changes? Well, the one we had on today?
I haven't read it because I haven't had the time to read it.
The only difference is the number of students per something. I presume for a day.
Yeah, there's a summary at the end, so the second to last page, the last page is the signature page, but the summary is the conditions, and that is highlighted. That is the difference. If you want me to read it, I can read both. So, with the alternative, the mitigation measures are discussed. Camp enrollment will be limited to an average of 360 campers and 90 staff, including 65 overnight per day. During limited weeks, peak weekly enrollment may exceed that average up to a maximum of 420 campers.
And the one we had in August?
23rd was very similar language, but it talked about a maximum to 480.
What page was that? That's...
It's the second, second packet.
Yeah, that's back here. Yeah, there's the one with the 480.
That was the August 23rd version. This is two versions being discussed today.
The September 13th that we received?
On Friday, last week, yes.
Maximum of 360, right, camp enrollment limited to?
Correct.
So, that's really what we reviewed, and so this alternative is on top of that?
Correct.
It's an alternative to this?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the alternative to the?
To what we've seen.
What was the other two that were drafted?
Yeah, to this one.
So, the August 23rd too, also, yes.
Yeah. So, this replaces this?
Mm-hmm. Correct. This would be your adopted document if you considered it. Do you want to speak to Ellen? Any questions for Ellen? Any questions for me?
I don't think, is Ellen here?
Ellen is here.
Oh. Hi, Ellen, how are you?
Good to see you.
It's up to you if you have any questions.
If you have specific questions.
Please.
Andy. Sure. Good to see you again, Ellen. Hi. So, with our August 23rd finding statement, we were looking specifically at camp enrollment. And the statement contained an average enrollment of 360 with a peak maximum of 480?
Yes.
And then, there's another finding statement that shows a max enrollment of 360?
Yes.
And then, the third, sort of the hybrid, which is, which is a maximum enrollment of, peak enrollment of 420, still maintaining the average of 360?
That's right.
Okay. Otherwise, pretty much methodology and all the other elements?
Right. The other findings are the same. The assessment of the impacts, the finding of no significant impacts is, was the same. Correct.
Ellen, I'm Jackie LaFaro. I wasn't here, but I watched you on the website, so I was aware of the hearing. So, I too have read the scope, the DEIS, the FEIS, this finding statement. And with all of that review, I find that there are still some substantive issues that require clarification or perhaps a supplemental. That's to be determined. My big issue is with groundwater flow going into Little Fresh Pond, out of Little Fresh Pond. There are conflicting reports that leave large questions for me. And I've written this out, this statement, I've attached some of the, several of the comments, one of the hydrologists, Zibel, from the Little Fresh Pond group, excuse me. And I believe that the only way to resolve that would be to have a neutral third party or an engineer issue a report and let the Suffolk County Health Department determine it. But that is my big issue here, primarily because of the environmental impact. And we all know that Little Fresh Pond is impaired, if not threatened. The direction of the flow of the water is critical if it's going in the direction of, and I've submitted some excerpts here, to determine one environmental, one expert says it flows away, one says it doesn't, it flows toward. And so, that's, for me, that's a big issue that's not resolved, and...
Okay, so, our firm was hired by the town, by the planning department, the planning board, to review the documents that were prepared by the applicant. So, we reviewed the applicant's documents. We also reviewed the comments that were submitted by the community. So, we were really the neutral third party because we are not working for the applicant. We are working for the town, for the planning board. So, we reviewed everything. Our geologists, our hydrogeologists, our experts reviewed everything. So, when we came up with a finding that there's no significant impact, we did not just go along with the applicant. We did an independent review when we came up with that finding. So, I mean, I understand your concern, and I understand how you feel, but I can tell you that we did not just side with the applicant. We actually had our own people who did the review, who did a neutral review of that.
Yeah, I understand. I understand, but, but the issue is that there are still outstanding issues as to the flow. Testing that has not been done, some testing that was done, and some subsequent testing that was done by the applicant. But there still remains additional testing to be done to determine. And I believe that it's an important enough issue to look at it further. That's what I'm saying. I know you looked at it, and, but I'm saying that I believe it requires a supplemental look.
Okay, so, that would be something, that would be a decision of the planning board?
That's right.
Right. What was done, what was looked at, was what was in the original scope to be studied, if there are additional scope, additional items of an additional scope? Again, that is the decision of the planning board. That's your, that is your, that's your decision, and that's...
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the only thing that can trigger supplemental is new information.
New information regarding the project that comes up that would be deemed to, to cause a significant environmental impact?
Right. I mean, let's...
Well, it says, "A supplemental EIS provides an analysis of one or more significant adverse environmental impacts,"
Correct.
"...which were not addressed or inadequately addressed in the EIS." Doesn't mean that they were not addressed, just inadequate. And that, this is right out of the SECRIB handbook, that could trigger a supplemental.
So, your argument would be that it was not adequately addressed?
Yeah, exactly.
But one would, you would also want to see if this was in the scope. I know some issues were brought up for studies that were not done, but those were also not part of the initial scope. Certain studies of the pond, certain, certain studies of the wetlands that were beyond the scope of this study, of this document as well.
Right, but we're not going back to the scope.
No, I understand. I understand. I understand your concern, that again, that's the planning board's decision.
Yeah, because the DEIS has changed from the scope, and the FEIS has changed from the DEIS, so...
I understand. It's the planning board's decision if you feel that, that, if you're, whether or not you're comfortable or not with the information that you have, and that's, that's really your call.
I mean, if I may add, I read the summary of both hydrologist's reports, and I'm not smart enough in that area to understand why some things were done one way and some things were done another way. And actually, when Dennis and I met with Mr. Jacobs and did a review of the facility, that was one of the questions I said to him, that I think we need someone else to say, "Okay, this is why this was done this way, this is why this is done this way. They're both right, they're both wrong, it should have, this should have been added, that should have been added." So, I echo Jackie with, I don't think it was accurate.
So, maybe you can explain to us how your review was done, what the methodology was used by your hydrologists?
Our hydrologists reviewed the reports. They are experts, and they, I'm not a hydrologist. Our hydrologists reviewed it, and they, they were satisfied with the methodology that was done, with the results that, that they, that were, with the results that were done, that were done in the studies.
There would be no adverse impact?
Right. They were, that's correct. They looked at the flows, they looked at the levels of, the levels of Little Fresh Pond, and they looked at the, there were monitoring wells that looked at the surface water levels of Little Fresh Pond and the groundwater levels of the monitoring wells, and given the differential in the water levels, they determined that Little Fresh Pond fed into the groundwater as opposed to the other way around, given the groundwater levels.
And the error in the methodology by the, by the hydrologist from the community? What was the error in his methodology?
I can't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Because he came up with a different?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Totally different conclusion.
Totally different conclusion in that the periods of testing, seasonal high water conditions, there wasn't sufficient data reported, it's all listed here in that report, which are not slightly opposite, but totally opposite, the hydrology report of the applicant. So, it leaves, it leaves an...
But nonetheless, our own experts concluded that it was not so significant as to be able to invalidate the findings. I'm just saying, that's what our experts said.
Yeah, just saying, that's what Ellen is saying, and I still have an issue with that because that doesn't, for me on the planning board, as a planning board member, it doesn't satisfy my need for an explanation and understanding. I mean, I could not, in all fairness, say that there's no environmental impact from this project on the pond.
Well, we had during the, during the review of the DEIS, we had people review it, and they were comfortable with it. And then, during the FEIS, when I came onto the project, I also gave it to someone, and I said, "Can you read this?" And someone else reviewed it and came back to me as well and said, "Yeah, this, this, yeah, this, this is right, this makes sense." So, separately, several different people at our company reviewed, several different hydrogeologists, geologists, reviewed the studies and looked at the conclusions and said, "Yes, this is correct."
Were they in discussion at all with the, with the other hydrologists?
The, with each other at our company?
No.
With the people who did the other study?
Yeah.
I don't know that.
With Pia Lombardo or with Zibel?
I don't, I don't know. That I can't answer.
So, a thorough investigation of this particular issue, I don't want to keep repeating myself, but to me is critically important because of the environmental nature and the impact on Little Fresh Pond. If I don't understand which way that water is flowing, if it's going into the pond, there's an environmental impact, sufficient enough to require certainly a supplemental look at it. So...
I will say that, as I said, our, our experts did determine that the groundwater does not flow into the pond and that it, the pond recharges the groundwater. I mean, that's what our, our, our company determined.
And there's documentation that was submitted, certainly by, by groundwater testing and ponds and flow, from other states that have very similar characteristics to Long Island, like Cape Cod, like Massachusetts. And all of it says that the nature of this pond, the configuration of this pond, its groundwater, its bottoms, that water flows into it. So, what I'm saying is that there's, there's a conflict, and how to resolve it? Okay.
When we look at hydrology, though, I think the alternative section needs to be reviewed. It's a misconception that if the ZBA turns this project down, that it's going to revert to sleepy mom and pop tennis camp from the 1990s. This is a residential yield of 22 house lots, 22 cesspools, 22 washing machines, 22 dishwashers, 88 bathrooms, maybe more?
Correct.
22 swimming pools. And it's naive to think that this, if this project is turned down by the zoning board of appeals, that it's somehow going to languish in the heart of it.
Dennis, that, since those lots are so close to, to Little Fresh Pond, would they not be required to put in enhanced systems?
No, this is not in the IA system.
Wetlands.
This is not in the IA system. And typically, what happens in these scenarios is, "Oh, we'll cluster little houses away from the lot." So, what the applicants typically do is, first, they, they file for a demolition permit, and they wipe out all the structures. So, then you have one large house lot in a residential zone. Step two, they file for a building permit and put a spectacular house overlooking Little Fresh Pond. The lawn, they'll have, they'll maintain their setbacks, 100-foot buffer, non-disturbance, 125 structure, you know the regs. So, they get that house, see a vote, and then they come to this board and say, "Hey, we'd like you to, we'd like our other 21 house lots." So, there goes our ability to cluster.
I wasn't suggesting clustering. Are they not required to put in individual systems?
No, they are not.
That's not part of...
Not the IA, this is not in the zone. In the future, they may be required, but right now, they would go into standard septic systems.
This board could impose that, and besides, there's not an exact apples-to-apples comparison about if this is not developed, goes further as a summer camp and a tennis camp with 22 house lots, what's the environmental impact of that? I mean, there's no...
Zoning.
There's no, but there's no analysis to say, you can't just say simply that, "Well, that's going to be a greater environmental impact." Based on what? You know, what are the facts?
I still have a question as to whether, when it goes back, if these, it leaves, once it leaves us and goes to the ZBA, if the ZBA decides that they're not going to make the change to another non-conforming, what is the basis for saying that it's not going to be stopped from exhibiting, being a camp? Because the camp day camp is in quotes in the ZBA statement. So, where is the findings of what it's going to go back to?
And it was, it was originally a tennis?
I mean, I just want to understand.
That's the baseline.
Yeah, the baseline is, is it, is it?
Well, as planners, as planners who keep the code, we'll assume 22 house lots. We're not going to assume it's going to go to some non-conforming use or some pre-existing use. We're the planners, we keep the code, and it's residentially zoned, and it's going to be 22 house lots. That's what we have to assume.
I think...
The thing that's going to, yeah, maybe, maybe they'll make larger, maybe anything.
A larger open space parcel, larger house lots.
Well, where I don't think we want to be is continuing bouncing the ball back and forth to try to come up with some report that will support the conclusion that somebody wants to draw. I think we're at the point right now where we have seen arguments from both sides, and we've had to hire our own expert to compare those arguments, to come up with a finding that we can hang our hat on. I think that's where we are. I think we also have to understand that these people are basically telling us they are going to comply with standards, and they've demonstrated that their willingness to comply with standards, and that, you know, the better use from a planning standpoint is to go with the applicant, and then, if they don't, I mean, there are enforcement issues that can be brought into play. But I happen to agree with Dennis that, you know, you have to look down the road. I mean, we're not the Little Fresh Pond Association Planning Board, and we're not the Southampton Country Day Camp Planning Board. We're the Tampa Southampton Planning Board. And ultimately, what is the best use from a planning standpoint for this property and this application? And I, for one, would, am of the belief, as is, I think, Dennis, that 22 additional houses along Little Fresh Pond is going to have a much more negative impact on the pond than the operation of this camp.
That's not the question before us. We are...
I know that, but that's where we're heading.
...an agency on SECRIB.
That's where we're heading.
Not necessarily.
And I just...
That's a lot of supposition, and you're going a long way. We still have to go through the ZDA and decide if this has been to code. There's a long distance between that. We are here to decide whether the application as submitted by the applicant, which I'm confused as to which application we have, is, has an environmental impact on the SECRIB. And I'd like to stay with that, with that statement. I'm not going to start to be threatened with 22 houses coming down the tubes, and that's how I'm making my decision. I'm making my decision on the application that's in front of me right now, and I'd like to know which one is.
So, let's talk about the number of campers. We were told that 100-plus more campers is no environmental impact, absolutely no environmental impact further. You've seen this, right?
Yes.
And as our consultant, what, what's your evaluation?
Based on the additional information provided by the applicant, no significant impact for the, the additional, the noise that the applicant provided, it's, it's below the threshold for additional impact. The transportation was no additional buses because the, currently, the buses are not full, so they could fit the campers on the buses. And in terms of the wastewater, they need to get approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health for additional wastewater, and I believe that one of the septic systems is being replaced, and that would need to be sized appropriately for the additional campers, and they would need approval from Suffolk County Department of Health before they would be able to operate.
Inquiry, are you basing that on the information that was given to us during the comment period or in the information that has been submitted subsequently?
That is...
When after the, after the hearing was closed and the 10-day applicant comment period was closed?
That is from the letter to the planning board from the applicant dated May 16.
Which is past the 30 days.
Correct.
So, you're past the 10 days, excuse me?
That is from a letter dated, I believe, May 16 to the planning board, and information from the applicant provided in August, which I, which now is an attorney's matter. That is no longer an environmental consultant's judgment.
Okay, but that was, you made the basis on the fact of information that was given to you after the hearing and the, and the comment period was closed.
I was just asked an environmental question. That's the answer. In terms of whether it can be considered for the SECRIB decision, I have, I, that's, I just give you an environmental answer.
So, that on the basis of the record right now, you don't have that answer, which would then, which would then request a supplemental EIS to determine whether the sustained and continued amount of enrollment, which is above 360, it has an effect because that is not in your report. In the report, that is part of the, of the actual report itself.
So, I can, as I said, I can tell you that in terms of environmental, that there's not a significant impact. But in terms of how that falls within the SECRIB, in terms of being able to include that in the findings from SECRIB, there, that's, that's a gray area, so that, that's really a legal, I, I'm not comfortable saying that can be included in SECRIB.
I would have to be, I would think it would have to be excluded if it's not examined in, in a SECRIB process.
We've had a lot of discussions the last few days, and that's, that's, that's a legal gray area.
It would be up to the board's discretion if they want to consider it.
Well, part of the problem is this record has never been closed. I mean, at the last hearing, I directed Patty to close this record, and this was the end of August, way past the May 26th. I got, I got an email today in my inbox. I got another email last week.
I've gotten three as I'm sitting here.
As you're sitting there.
But what's a part of the official record? We can get letters from everybody.
Those letters are in the official record.
They're not supposed to, they're not supposed to be...
They're not supposed to be.
Part of, the record was closed, the record was closed on April 26 with the acceptance of the FEIS with a 10-day additional comment period. Nothing else should be considered that comes in past that period. That's whether it's coming from the community or it's coming from the applicant. Plus, second point on this issue of average versus maximum, and I hate to use this example because it seems quite childish, but I, it's the only way I can express it. If I make a wash, I make five washes in one day, okay? And I make five washes in one day, my cesspool will not hold that. If I average that out to one wash a week over five weeks, my cesspool will be able to hold that. We do not have in this report any evidence or any testing that showed that the consistent and sustained enrollment over 360 for four to five weeks, which were, I think, what it was for this past summer, does not have an effect. I don't know where you can point that out to me in your report. I understand averaging, but averaging is very different than the consistent and sustained over 360. Is that in the report?
Those calculations?
Yes.
No. What you do say, what you do say in the findings...
So, I would be asking for a supplemental.
What you do say in your findings, and it says throughout the finding, is that additional flow needs to be approved by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. Suffolk County Department of Health Services for the additional flow will require drawings, will, will require an application, will require calculations. They will not approve anything that is not sized. So, therefore, nothing will, nothing will be approved that will not meet the criteria.
But that's not what our responsibility here is, or my consultants. Somewhere's between the DEIS and the FEIS, the word maximum came out, the word average went in, and that happened, I believe, in April. At that point, and from that point forward, okay, there has been nothing done on terms of testing. Now, if in April, my consultant and the planning department had not decided that we, as a board, would not be notified of this, because this was not brought to our attention, that it had gone from average, from maximum to average, if we had known this, we could have asked you to do... asked you to do that testing, because that's where the camp ran this summer, for three or four weeks or five weeks of the camp, by their own admission, ran over 400. We could have found that out, but a decision was made that that testing would not be done. I am now asking for supplemental to correct and properly correct an omission that was made in the record in April.
That's your.
Quick question for Claire. Can enrollments, can the enrollment issue, is that something that can be addressed at during site plan, or does that have to be finalized in SECRE?
Um.
Because they have to make, they have to apply to the health department, correct?
Yes.
They have to submit drawings, septic drawings showing capacity, and based on that, those drawings and associated hydrology, I would think that's when, that's a juncture when the ultimate, the ultimate enrollment cap would be determined.
Well, in order to address the environmental concerns that were brought up and investigated and analyzed, there, a cap is part of your review on this. Otherwise, you can't say it's been mitigated.
Right. And you can't, right, and you can't say there's no environmental impact if you haven't looked at it.
You have no, no findings, no, no record.
Well, our wastewater engineer has looked at the drawings that went along with the, the design for the wastewater system that was installed in 2013. And he looked at the design, and he, again, he couldn't say with 100% certainty, but he has a lot of experience, and he looked at it, and he felt pretty comfortable that it did have the capacity for additional campers. Again, I've, I'm not going to.
Yeah, but he looked at it in 2013 when there was, according to this.
He looked at it a couple of weeks ago, and I asked him if he thought that it had the capacity for additional campers. And he, his answer to me, because I, I asked him this morning, I said, what should I tell the planning board? And he said to them that it probably would have the capacity, but tell them that the Suffolk County Department of Health Services would have to approve additional campers. But he, he did look at it, and it, it is designed for additional capacity. So given that the camp would have additional campers over 360, typically, these systems are designed for, they're not designed right to the, you know, right to the number of campers, not right to the number of, of the exact flow. They are designed for additional capacity.
But according to SECRE, we can't take oral testimony at this point from somebody that's not even here to cross the border.
I understand, I'm just trying to provide you with information.
What's questioned? I know, but I, we don't even have this person here to even question. How do I take the, I can't, I've got to go, I have to go by the scoping document, the DEIS, which is incorporated by reference into the FEIS, and I have to take the finding statement that you presented to me. And I'm having a problem with it because it's missing a vital piece of information on something that you changed and, and could have checked it back in April, and we wouldn't have to be sitting in the place we're sitting right now.
Well, the applicant's letter in April, they, I mean, they do, they do mention, I mean, they talk about the averages. Where is their letter?
I understand, I'm talking about my.
Maximum.
I'm talking about, yeah, I'm talking about this.
About a cap.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, as, as a cap, I mean, part of the SECRE review. That's what we're doing here. That is our obligation.
Right.
Well, the first finding statement we had, had a cap of 480.
Yes.
And the current version we have in front of us brings it down to 420, which is just a significant reduction.
Right. Which, again, as we had discussed, our, our judgment is that, based on what we discussed, you would not have significant environmental impacts from that number, given what the conditions are in the finding statements and the approvals that the applicant would need.
I mean, right now, there is no cap, the way they're operating.
That's right.
They could bring in 600 campers next summer.
Right, I mean, you, you, in this particular application, unlike many others, you're not starting with a vacant lot. So you, you already have an operation on that site that is.
But without ZBA approval to, to.
Continue.
To run it that way. And that, that's one, one of my, my concerns. They're running a day camp.
But they're operating.
Without the change of, without the change of.
But, but they do have permits for what, for what they are operating.
But not for the number?
Mm-mm.
No. That's not what the ZBA says. And I don't think we should be.
Well, that's not, that's not what we're here, but, but.
That's the only question.
But he's, he's, he has, there is something on that site currently, if, if he'd never applied for this.
Can you tell me how we got to the number 420? Sounds a little odd. You know, is it an arbitrary number? Is that based on anything?
Yes.
I guess that's the applicant's.
Correspondence from the applicant.
And, but we've been looking at 360, at captains, 360s.
Well, actually, 480. And I think you got.
No, 480 is his usage, it's not his cap.
The cap was 480.
The cap in, the.
No, that was his usage.
360.
Right. 480 was from the May 16th letter that was sent to the planning board.
Cap enrollment will be limited to a maximum of 360 campers and 90 staff.
I know, but we have, we have four finding statements.
We have five or six finding statements.
Well, this, this is what, what we got, what Claire sent us a couple of days ago, September.
Friday.
On Friday.
But the one before that.
Yeah, but this is what was.
On August 23rd was the one that referenced to the 480, which was based upon the applicant's letter from May 16th.
May 16th, had a maximum of 480 campers.
So we received additional correspondence?
Yeah.
That they are, maybe they reviewed their enrollment?
I think 420 was a letter from the applicant's attorney.
I don't have that letter.
A letter from the applicant's attorney.
Right. The applicant's attorney.
September 12th.
So that's beyond.
That's yesterday.
That's yesterday, and that's beyond.
That's beyond.
Comment.
So there's been a change?
So perhaps that was something in between the 480 and the 360?
And we'll just average that up.
Can I, um?
Anything to add, Claire?
I think, I'm, I'd like to pull the board.
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to pull the board.
Yeah, or ask the chairman to do that.
Right, I will. And I think the finding statement before us, the compromise at 420, further mitigates the initial cap of 480, maximum enrollment. It's reasonable that the enrollment in the camp is going to fluctuate. There are some weeks in the shoulder season, they won't even have 200, 150 campers. But the peak season, workable document has to accommodate that. So I think the board is going to consider the, the finding statement, modified enrollment cap, it's still going to be a 360, still going to be a 360 average, maximum enrollment 420. And as part of that, we're going to, we have directing the ZBA to implement a mechanism to, to properly monitor that and enforce that. Gloria, start with you.
Um, I'm going to have to vote no.
Okay.
For three reasons. Two of them are the ones that Jackie and Robin articulated, and the third.
Out of respect for the board, this is not a place for public comment.
You need to respect us.
Behave.
And the third reason, I did a little more research after the applicant explained the initial application to the Suffolk County Health Department about getting the grandfathered septic flow. And reading through the document, I realized that the cottages on the property, when that information was submitted to the Health Department, the assumption was that each cottage had 10-plus people living in them. And so I think that may have overstated the grandfathered septic flow. So that's another concern I have in terms of the environment.
Good. And then noted for the record, John, did you wish?
I want to vote yes. I think we have an obligation that when we ask for a report and the results of the report comes in, that other reports really should not be considered. So therefore, the flow report that Jackie stated isn't really relevant. What our person that we hired to do it, I have to go with that. Also, I think whatever we say about the septic system, when it goes to the Suffolk County, they do what they wish. They will tell the applicant what has to be done. So you will have another bite at the apple pursuing them through letters and possibly hearings. So I'm voting yes. I think that, based on the fact it's only open a small percent of the time, about 1/3 percent of the time, it has a minimal effect and probably no effect on Little Fresh Pond. So I vote yes.
Thanks, John. Just to clarify, though, just for the rest of the board, that this is not voting yes on the project. This is just a vote yes to adopt the finding statement, which then gets sent over to the zoning board appeals that have to do their own finding statement and action. This is not the approval or denial of the project. Phil, you have anything to add, or?
Um, we've got still a long way to go, and I'm sure that we're going to get additional information. But for the purposes of the finding statement, I'm voting yes.
Okay. My position is clear?
I vote yes.
Okay.
Submit this.
Jackie, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, well, I, I've made my statement about the importance of the direction of the flow and the environmental impact on Little Fresh Pond. I'm not representing Little Fresh Pond, Phil. I'm representing the environment of the town of Southampton. And I've been on this board many years, and everybody will tell you that that is an issue for me. And so the hydraulic, hydraulic report was issued way back in early April, and that hydrologist appeared in front of us. He went through the D, the scope, the DEIS, the FEIS. It's not new testimony. My other, which was included, was the description, a full description of this site, which is not only the tennis camp, but the continuation of, continuation of the tennis camp, which runs from May to October. So that adds more weeks to this operation, on top of which there have been public advertisements for events, told events there, and could bring in more people and more impact. That was never really looked at in the FEIS. Community character was not analyzed. It was given a very cursory mention in the FEIS. And community character, I don't think you have to look for, this has been going on for seven years, in that there is an involved and engaged and caring community, as they should be. And then the other issue I had was the no alternative, no action alternative. That, what does that go back to? Does it go back to the 2012 ZBA decision? Does it go back to what the applicant says, which is a later variation? So it means that if there's a no action alternative, that they can continue doing what they're doing.
Yes.
Which is not my understanding of why they are going to, this whole thing is driven by a ZBA application. One nonconforming use to another nonconforming use, and I had wanted to have the one phrase inserted, which was not somehow easily left out.
The camp, the, the tennis club, I think that was in the, the finding statement, the May.
Yeah, but there, but to me, there was one power, one phrase that was left out, Ellen. It says, the Southampton Day Camp would be required to seek a variance from the ZBA pursuant to Southampton Town Code 330-167B3. This is what was left out. Since these uses are not compatible or interchangeable pursuant to the SIC code. So based on all of that, I find that there is an environmental impact, so for this finding statement, I vote no.
All right, and Robin?
Yes, if you don't mind, I'm going to read a statement because it was important for me to make sure that I got my point across, so I'm not doing this off my head this time. The document before us for review and ultimately for vote today is the finding statement. We, the planning board, are the lead agency for SECRE in this application. The application is the proposed change from one nonconforming use to another and the associated site improvement for Southampton Day Camp Realty LLC. On March 15th, 2012, ZBA, in its decision in the matter of the application of Little Fresh Pond Association at Al, found, and I'm quoting from their conclusion, "Therefore, this board finds that the proposed renovation and expansion of the subject premises from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use, since these uses are not compatible or interchangeable pursuant to the SIC code, SDCR must seek a variance from the board pursuant to the Southampton Town Code." I won't cite this section. The job of the planning board on this application is SECRE. We are not the board which will decide on the zoning issues, nor whether the camp is operating under code. Issues such as site plan review, which is under our purview, will arise after the ZBA makes this decision if they find in favor of the camp. To make a decision on the finding statements, we must review the record before us, which consists of the scoping document, the DEIS, the FEIS, and the comments received within the SECRE time periods. In this instance, the record was closed on April 26, 2018, with the acceptance of the FEIS as adequate by the planning board with a 10-day additional comment period. All other comments, reports, and advisements post that 10-day period cannot be a part of the record. A substantial change was made sometime between the DEIS and the FEIS on this application. The DEIS dated April 2016 and revised September 2016 states that the maximum future day camp enrollment is to be 360 campers and 90 staff. And I can refer to the, from the executive summary, the transportation summary, the noise summary, the description, there's many sections of that DEIS that I can cite. The FEIS dated April 2018 incorporates that by reference. Neither the introduction nor the revised site plan, which are the sections of the FEIS, advises the proposed enrollment has changed now to an average of 360 campers and 90 staff. You have to read each response to the comments to find the buried references. The finding statement, without acknowledging that a change has been made, states that the camp enrollment is now based on an average enrollment of 360 campers, with an estimated, in the first finding statement, upwards to 480 on a given week. The planning board consultant and the planning department did not bring this change to our attention. Since the proposed camp will now have, and during this summer has had numerous weeks of over 400 campers, it is responsibility of this board unto SECRE to have testing conducted to determine whether the sustained and consecutive increased weekly enrollments will have a negative effect on the environment. Further, the public has a right to respond to the substantial change. Process and equity demands the acknowledgement that between the DEIS and the FEIS, a change was made by the applicant, process and equity demands the acknowledgement that no analysis was ever conducted to determine whether, and I'm putting this in quotes, "change by the project sponsor may result in significant adverse environmental impacts not addressed in the original EIS." I take that from the SECRE guidelines. And process and inquiry demands that since the change in enrollment may result in significant environmental impact, a supplemental EIS is required prior to a vote on the finding statements. This is not a delay by the board, as this question arose in April and should have been addressed by the consultant and/or the planning department. Process demands that the board not accept a finding statement that tries to cure this defect by capping the enrollment at 420. See page 31 of the fifth version, or maybe it's the sixth version, of the finding statement. This is an arbitrary number based not on the record, but in a compromise with the applicant, a compromise which ignores the rights of the community and the environment which we are entrusted to protect. On the basis of the foregoing, a supplemental EIS should be prepared addressing the change from a maximum enrollment to an average enrollment number and the impacts therefrom prior to the finding statements. In conclusion and in concurrence with the statements of my colleagues Jackie LaFara and Gloria Burke, I must vote in the negative on the finding statement and request that a supplemental EIS be conducted to address the environmental concerns raised herein and in the statements of my colleagues Jackie LaFara and Gloria Burke. Thank you.
If you want to.
What, what are we voting on, Dennis?
We're going to.
The, the, the alternative.
The, the, the finding statement.
This is the resolution.
Dated September 13th.
Dated September 13. Do we have...
Labeled as alternative.
What is this, alternative?
Yes.
Oh, it is. Barry, do you want to read it into the record?
The first page is basically the description of how we got here. I'm going to...
What are the...
The last paragraph begins, "Whereas the planning board has requested that a finding statement be prepared, which summarizes the facts and conclusions of the draft and final EIS, the planning board finds that the action meets the SECRE requirements and is consistent with social, economic, and other essential considerations from among the reasonable alternatives available. The action is one that avoids or minimizes adverse environmental impacts to the maximum extent practicable, and adverse impacts will be avoided or minimized to the maximum extent practicable by incorporating as conditions to the decision those mitigative measures and safeguards that were identified as practicable. Now therefore, be it resolved, the planning board..."
Whoa.
Sorry about that. There was a cut in case. "...the planning board of Town Southampton hereby accepts and adopts the finding statement prepared on its behalf by the town's consultants, cash and associates, in conjunction with the town planning department, dated September 13, 2018, pursuant to the State Quality Review Act and Chapter 157 of Town Code. And be it further resolved as required by SECRE and its implementing regulations, copies of the finding statement shall be sent to all required parties listed under SECRE regulations and notice is given that the finding statement is available to access on the town website."
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by Zuccarelli. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
We have three opposed, four in favor. Finding statement is adopted, and onto the ZBA.
Shame.
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 Shame on you.
Shame.
Shame on you.
Please play the room.
Shame.
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 We have other matters, that matters people in Town Southampton.
We are...
We'll see you in court.
Shame on you.
Big influence, but big money and big business in here. This is not the way it should run.
No respect for the community.
No respect for the park.
That's right. No respect to us.
No respect for the environment.
Where is the community character in this decision?
Right.
Do you care about our neighborhood?
Think about the rules.
All the people standing around.
How can...
That our projects, have projects.
Please leave.
Sir, you're going to have to leave the room.
We'll see you in court.
Absolutely. I'll be the tall guy. You can't miss me.
Be the tall guy who has to...
Please, it doesn't help. It doesn't help what you're doing, please. It doesn't help. It doesn't help.
We'll have to answer for that.
Please, it does not help.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Ellen, thank you so much.
Leave that door. Thank you very much.
Next.
You're complicit.
Hello.
I've been watching you.
Not open to the community at all.
Wow. Good afternoon.
A trust proposal.
We'll have a SWAT team in here. They'll be the ones that get shot.
Moving on to number four.
Number four. Let's get to the hard application.
Finish the agenda.
Wow.
That's fun.
This is Henry Kreszewski, well, at construction, some site plans.
Number four.
Number four. If anybody would...
Kreszewski, is that...
It's Kreszewski.
Thank you.
Kreszewski. I have paper site plans, if anybody would like to look at them.
Yes.
Which number are we going with?
Number four.
Number four.
Kazweski.
Kreszewski.
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 Smith, like Zuccarelli.
Exactly. Do you guys have a site plan uploaded?
Yeah, right. Let's see. We have a photo.
Cool.
Yeah. We have an aerial.
Yep. So we got this back on August 15.
This is across, like, diagonally from the Omni, right?
It's next to, what am I thinking?
Next to Revco, or this mini storage?
Yeah, it fronts on 39. I know it has a, the address is 276 North East Street, but it's got frontage on 39.
You have Revco, the mini storage, and then this big field where they sell the strawberries.
Strawberries, correct. And this is actually partially within the town, partially within the village, was created by a subdivision map.
Strawberry's alone.
Hang in there. Yeah. But yeah, we got this back, they submitted on August 15, at construction permit proposes to construct a 2,700-square-foot enclosed area within just under 4,000 square feet total barn area on the subdivision map created by Glennie Jagger. This is for agricultural storage and then potentially seasonal farm stand use. It's a type-two action under SECRE.
Were they planning to put the, they're going to put it up by the road?
Yeah, on the town property, we will refer this, the town, not the town property, the town, the portion of the property.
How large is it?
The barn is 2,700 square feet enclosed, just under 4,000 square feet width, it's got a porch on either side. Yeah. But yeah, just looking to deem this complete instead of hearing.
Very good. Do you have a giving date? Do you have a giving date?
October 11.
Very good. Motion by Phil? Second by Blaney. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We have six yes, one absent.
Just a question. Carrie, October 11 is the next public?
Yeah.
And we have just the one?
Yes.
We'll be setting up again.
So far, that would be the first one. Okay.
I think there's three tonight.
Okay. Yeah. No hearing tonight.
Don't hear it, so.
I'm not going to be here anyway. They'll be hanging me in the streets.
Moving on to number five. Anthony Fettana, this is for a pre-submission conference. I did upload a site, potential site plan. I do have some renderings of the building, and they are not scanned in. So they, the applicant had submitted a flat roof. This is on Spionk Riverhead Road in the industrial area. It's, what's the total? 12,000 square feet, four uses for special trade contractor. And I know, we want to review the architecture. I asked for something with a peaked roof also. But this is really just to submit for the pre-submission conference, potentially, it's in the compatible growth area, so they need some pine barrens credits if they wanted to clear to 65%, which they're working on getting now, but we're looking to set this hearing for October 11 also, for pre-submission.
Very good. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by Zuccarelli. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Six yes, one absent.
Okay. Number 10.
Yeah.
Gerard. Gerard Isabel Smith. We have a pre-application report that I'd like to review with you. I did upload it, but there was, it's going to have changes now. The most recent version is up on, should be on your iPads.
Yeah, an aerial and...
Aerial, there should be a map and a report.
Yeah, there's an aerial and a map.
We're good. If everybody can see it, I'll start reviewing the report, if that's okay?
Sure.
Everybody see it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, this project considers action on a single developed partial property situated in the CR 200 zoning district located at 180 Middle Line Highway. It's in North Sea. It's improved and benefits from a certificate of occupancy dated December 20, 2000 for a single-family two-story dwelling, attached garage, porch, deck, and swimming pool. The pre-application consists of a two-lot subdivision with a total project area of just over 12 acres. Proposed lot one is to contain 200,000 square feet, and proposed lot two, a flag lot, is to contain the existing improvements and will contain 328,265 square feet. In terms of standard development, first planned residential development, the applicant has not submitted a PRD or a cluster plan with their application. There is town-owned open space to the north and west of the parcel, on the opposite side of Middle Line Highway, which has trail connectivity, but on their side of the highway, there's no real connectivity in terms of open space to connect to further trails. It's pretty much developed on the south side of Middle Line there. So we recommend to waive that requirement for a cluster. The proposed action is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE, as it's in the aquifer protection overlay district. They'll be required to submit a short form EAF at the time of the final application. The requested action is in conformance with the 1999 comprehensive plan update, to the extent that the project is in compliance with the applicable land use regulations. In terms of the park requirement, we're, you know, traditionally requesting it be paid the fee, you know, for the additional residential building parcel, which is 2,500 per additional lot. At the public hearing on June 28, no public comments were received. Qualifies for minor review. And then in terms of referrals, the Department of Fire Prevention just requested that the street number is posted, and they did note that the area is not served by public water mains. No comments were received from the North Sea Fire District. The Reiner Group did submit comments on behalf of the town engineer, which are as follows. A portion of the existing driveway for the single-family residents on proposed lot two is located on proposed lot one. The applicant should clarify whether the driveway would remain or is proposed to be relocated to the flag strip portion of lot number two. If the driveway is to remain and access easement over lot one would be required. Then just to verify the location of the utilities, they did note that the flag strip meets the requirements, it's 20 feet wide, and that it falls within the aquifer protection overlay district, and the clearing calculations were provided. No comments were received from the Highway Department. Traditional comments from the Department of Health Services and Trails Advisory Board stated that they, there are no trail implications at this time. Nothing was received from the CAC, so I'd go through the recommendations, see if everyone's cool with that. So number one, lot one and two shall be accessed via a single common driveway. The home currently on proposed lot two has an existing driveway, so if constructing a new driveway for both lots, the driveway shall be relocated to the flag strip portion of lot two. Should the existing driveway be utilized and access easement over lot one will be required. Number two, the subject parcel lies within the aquifer protection overlay district, as such clearing restrictions would be, will apply to both proposed lots. The applicant has indicated proposed lot two, which contains the existing improvements, will be 17.5% cleared, where Section 33067 permits 15% clearing for a parcel of this size. Basically, this will have to be addressed. I included that a site disturbance application will be required. There's other means of mitigating the clearing. They could either potentially adjust the lot line so it's less of a percentage, and I did have the opportunity to go to the parcel yesterday, and there's some clearing that they could potentially set aside now and kind of tighten their clearing lines to bring them into compliance.
Right.
The application must include a short form EAF.
I mean, another alternative, they could encumber the front lot with the greater, you know, clearing restrictions.
And I can add that, too.
And hopefully, they understand what an APOD is and what it means and what it's there.
Yes, they do. The, like I said, the applicant, the final application must include a short form EAF as the subject application is an unlisted action, and the applicant shall comply with all comments to Division of Fire Prevention. They should comply with all comments submitted by the Grainer Group on behalf of the town engineer, and the final application must include Suffolk County Department of Health Services' approval. And upon addressing above, the applicant should proceed to the final applications, the application fees, et cetera. And I do have the applicant's representative here. Who wants to speak?
Yes. Trouble for...
Sure. Hello. Please use a podium and state your name also.
Katerina Greenkov, 2008, 51 Hill Street, Southampton, and also the owner of the property. Mr. Smith is present. We just want to, at this point or stage of the application, clarify the recommendation number two, to file the site disturbance application. So the way it's written right now, it is required for us to go to the zoning board of appeals to seek relief for the 2.5%, which is, appears to be as an over-cleared area.
I think that's a ZBA.
No.
No.
Not a ZBA.
No, you don't have to go to the ZBA.
We don't have to go to...
No.
So...
You could submit a, there are a number of ways you can address the overclea, for one thing, the overclearing doesn't exist until you file a map.
Right.
So there's a number of ways prior to filing the map that you can address it. One is coming in with a restoration plan. The other is, you mentioned there's some...
There's some cleared areas on the property where they can potentially tighten up their clearing lines, and if it was amicable to the board to allow the areas to, you know, re-vegetate naturally.
Re-vegetate that.
What I wanted to address the board to see if that would be a possibility, is we could perhaps leave the landscaped areas untouched so that the natural vegetation comes back.
Right, that's what we encourage.
Because the lawn area, actual lawn area, and I prepared a very rough sketch, significantly smaller than actual area of disturbance, so just something to keep in mind.
It's something you don't really have to address now.
Okay.
Because you have to go to the Health Department, and that's going to take months.
Right, we understand that. We just figured to kind of lay it out with the board right now, so that at the final stage, we don't have any wrinkles. And I will still submit it for the file, because I prepared it to emphasize that if the board would be amicable to us, just leave the landscaped areas untouched so that the vegetation comes back, because they're currently heavily vegetated, and I'm sure you've seen it, Matt, right? I mean, it's not, it's not lawn. Even though it's marked as cleared area in the survey, it's not what the survey kind of depicts. So I'm still submitting this sketch, and then before the final page of the application, we can agree.
Yes.
And most likely, what we're going to do, we're just going to commit to leave the landscaped areas.
And I can change, I can change my recommendations also to include those other forms of mitigation for the clearing.
Yeah, that would be better, because that...
Yeah. No, it's a little kind of close as you have.
Yeah. All right, so I'll still submit it for the file.
Okay.
So we're all on the same page. All right, Matt?
Yeah, thank you.
And that's all.
That's it? Okay. So then with those changes, we're ready to adopt the pre-application report. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Blaney?
Second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We have six yes, one absent. All right, did you want to jump to Kathleen Gray?
Yes, please.
Item 14.
I do have paper copies for you, because there was a change made in this one.
Take one, pass it down. We've got an extra. Do you have paper, you said you had maps, paper maps?
I have, the map should be, is it in there? On iPads?
Oh, it's on here.
Yeah.
It's here.
Is this an upgrade to what's on the computer, or is it the same? The report is an upgrade. Okay. Yeah. Everybody's ready?
Yeah.
Okay. This is the subdivision application with Kathleen Gray. The project considers action on a single developed property situated in the R20 zoning district located at 13 Argoon Road West within the hamlet of Hampton Bays. It's improved and benefits from a certificate of occupancy dated October 21, 1994, for one-story, one-family frame dwelling with one-car garage attached by open breezeway and deck. The pre-application consists of a two-lot subdivision with a total project area of 44,828 square feet on proposed lot one. Oh, sorry, proposed lot, proposed lot one is proposed at 21,726 square feet and will contain all the existing improvements. And proposed lot two, a flag lot, is proposed at 23,102 square feet, compliance with zoning. The proposed subdivision requires relief from the zoning board of appeals to allow our proposed building's side yard setback on lot one, 14.1 feet, where 20 feet is required. The applicant shall verify with the building divisions, building and zoning division to inquire if they need any further arrangements. In terms of compliance with Town Code, with 29238E, that speaks to a flag lot. Proposed lot two, a flag lot, does not comply with this section of the Town Code, which states that flag lots within the R20 zone shall be one and a half times the lot area of the applicable zoning district within the, within the bulk lot, which is bulk of the lot, absent of the flag. It's the practice of the planning board to consider waiving this practice so long as the bulk area of the proposed flaglot meets the minimum lot area for the applicable zoning district. However, lot two is just shy of the 20,000 square feet in the bulk area, so with some adjusting to that lot line, I'm sure they can make up the 18 square feet to get them to 20,000 in the bulk area.
Why aren't they going to do that?
You'll find it.
Yeah.
So, the overall square foot, you're bringing a truckload of dirt, right?
No, yeah, it's like, if you look at the map, if the, if that rear lot, the, you know, rear lot line of lot one between the two, if that's possibly brought up the surveyor, the, the bulk area will get bigger for that one, will get slightly smaller for the...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a zoning requirement, it's a design requirement.
Yeah, design requirement.
So, we, well, we can't create a lot less than 20,000 square foot anyway.
Correct, it's not. Including the flag, it's 23,000, but the provision that is that the bulk area for you guys usually is that you want at least the bulk area to be...
Zoning, right.
To meet zoning, yeah.
We can.
Can we waive the 18 square feet?
We can.
How much would that...
It's the board, yeah. I'll go through, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good thing, no?
Yeah.
It's in the code, and generally, we request that it's at these 20,000.
At least it meets the 20?
Yeah, I think you can...
I mean, it's 18 square feet.
What's the, what's the width of the lot?
Can they change the design so that it applies?
Yeah, they could go back to the surveyor and spend like another...
And adjust the lot.
This is Hampton Bays.
Yeah.
Another $3,000, $4,000.
Do you want to see the width of the lot?
To get 18 square feet.
But they designed it that way to begin with.
It's just, I, it might have been, I don't know why the surveyor designed it that way unless the, the lot line on the front piece where the house is kind of runs slightly on an angle, you can barely see it, and then if you look at their new rear lot line, that kind of goes on an angle maybe to keep it perpendicular, so it's more of a square shape. But, I mean, I can't speak to why their surveyor left out those 18 square feet, but it, they should be able to adjust those...
But if we can do that without violating zoning?
Yeah.
It's not zoning, it's not in the zoning.
But it's the code, right?
It's in 220 zone. Violate the code, yeah. It's in 292.
And that's 18 square feet, it doesn't work 20,000.
In other words, if you have a parcel lot that's 50,000 square feet, we don't allow them to go 25 and 25. They've got to go 20 and 30.
30.
But in this case, they have a parcel that's just 40,000 square feet, but, so...
It's 44.
It's preferable, it's preferable that it's supposed, yeah, the code says it's supposed to be a one and a half times size, a flaglot's supposed to be one and a half times the size of the minimum lot area for that zoning district. You can waive that however...
It's a design requirement.
As, yeah, however, it's that the bulk area of that flaglot needs to meet minimum zoning.
Yes.
So, it needs to be 20,000.
As far as, you've got to find 18 square feet.
18 square feet.
Somewhere.
What's the width of the, of the lot? I mean, can't you just take off 18 square feet from the front?
Somewhere.
It couldn't give up, it can give up 1,126 square feet and still be 20.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Just talking about moving the line, yeah.
Move the line.
Yeah.
If it's 18, you move it down a quarter of an inch, it's 36.
Exactly. It's not a huge adjustment.
That's a foot, it's not...
Yeah.
Make the surveyor pay for it.
Yeah.
He should.
Under secret, this is a type-two action, so no further environmental review is necessary. As I said, it does, it does conform with the comprehensive plan, and again, we would ask for a fee in, in lieu of, in lieu of park land. Public hearing was held on July 26, 2018. Comments were received from a budding neighbor who spoke in opposition of, to further density, you know, in his neighborhood and within the hamlet. This qualifies for minor review. Fire prevention stated that, you know, the, that the street number be posted and noted that the area is served by public water. Hampton Bays Fire District offered no comments. I do have comments from the Rayner Group on behalf of the town engineer. I'll get to, they speak to the flag in the first section, and also the need for variance, but I'll go to their, kind of what their comments were, that the Suffolk County tax parcel, these are some mapping requirements that they noted, that the tax parcel, tax map number needs to be corrected, location and the size of the water main, within the right-of-way of Aragon Road West should be shown, that number three's not applicable, and number four is actually, was erroneous too. They do have the required 20 feet, it's just, there's probably a slight deviation in the lot line, so it's in, the measurement's done in two pieces, one's like 15.98 and the other's 4.02, but they do have the 20. Traditional comments from the Health Department, the Conservation Board, and the applicant, they note that it's a subdivision, they note that the subdivision map does not show any of the existing limits of clearing, but the, the Environment Division did know that, did note that proposed lot, lot one is cleared while lot two is, is well vegetated, well vegetated with pitch pines and maples that are of a significant size, these, and they noted that the large mature trees provide much-needed wildlife habitat, and they were requesting that any mature trees in excess of 18 inches diameter at breast height need to be, should be surveyed and preserved to the maximum extent practicable. The Trails Advisory Board stated there's no trail implications, and we received no comments from the Hampton Bays CAC. In terms of recommendations, the proposed subdivision requires relief from the zoning board of appeals to allow for, for that principal building side yard setback, as I noted. And I did add in the section that they do have the 20 feet required of road frontage for the lot two, for the flagstrip. And then the second requirement is that the applicant shall adjust the lot line to allow for 20,000 square feet within the bulk area of lot two. The applicant should remove the building envelopes on the final map. So, address comments, the first and second comments provided by the Rayner Group on behalf of the town engineer, comply with all comments of the Division of Fire Prevention, they need Health Department approval, and then just the traditional process for submitting the final application.
Karen, anything else for us?
Karen, please.
Do you have to use the microphone?
Yes.
Sorry. You get yelled at otherwise.
No, sorry. Guaranteed referee for the applicant, Kathleen Gray. I just want again to ask that, you know, maybe to waive the 18 square feet because it is such a small lot, and it is going to require more money to have it surveyed, and I don't think we're setting a precedent or anything. I mean, it's, it's, you know...
We said the surveyor should pay for it. His error.
I would support that.
18 feet?
Pick and choose our battles.
All right. All right, I just asked.
I mean, the purpose of that is what costs associated with redoing surveys?
Yeah, that would mainly be the, because we're ready to go to the ZBA now and the Health Department and...
How quickly can he do it? I mean, just to move a line?
It's, it's, he's a very...
You've got to redo all the maps.
Yeah.
It's a 5 to 10,000.
Be careful next time. 18 feet? Let's say you folks, I think you have support here.
Jackie is giving, giving us the...
Generally, we just make sure it meets zoning.
And, and the bulk, but the bulk hasn't been zoning.
So that it doesn't create any issues with variance in the future.
So, take 18 square feet out of the flag.
Exclusive of the flag.
But we have building.
Anything in 294 would be waived by 294.
Yeah.
So, we can take 18 feet out of, out of the flag.
Well, they can do it, they can...
No, we can't take it out of the flag. The flag's got to be 20 feet long.
They have to move, they have to move the lot line.
We can take it out of the front lot.
You can take it out of the front lot, essentially.
Right.
They have to move the line.
Make the flag shorter.
Well, the flag won't...
Right?
If this...
Did you go to the Health Department?
If this line is potentially adjusted slightly...
No, because I need, that's the next step.
Here, to give more area to the...
What's the width?
Kathleen, okay.
It's 160 in the back.
160, yeah.
150 feet?
160.
That's like one inch across would give you, give you more than 18 square.
That's the, that's what I said.
Yeah. I think it's more than, but it's, you know, the lower...
Well, I think what she's, on behalf of her client, who's objecty to is the 5 to 10 grand it's going to cost to resurvey the lot, even if it's only an inch.
It's not even...
Have to change that map on the file.
Yeah, the map is, has to, the map is going to have to be changed anyway.
It's not a good deal, maybe move 18 feet per feet, and that's what I would do.
So, you can, you can still go to the ZBA now.
All right, we'll move it.
Anthony wins the day.
I just have to ask, you know?
No, I know, this is...
I have to advocate, so that's all.
It's your job.
Done well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, do we have a motion to adopt the report?
Motion.
Motion by Zagrely.
Thank you.
By Phil, all in favor, aye opposed.
And I have a couple more.
Six yes.
Number 22, 8 Watermill Heights, a site disturbance, a...
Number 22?
Number 22.
Yeah, okay.
Is it 8 Watermill Heights?
How's it look? I was going to say...
It looks good, it's a very well-done plan. I've been to the property, they're appropriate species. I did find out in reviewing this that they did encroach into a neighbor's property as well, so they'll be revegetating that as, as part of this.
Well, the lots are there, aren't they?
8 Watermill Heights, this, no, this is a pretty big piece, this is...
Five-acre lot.
Yeah, five-acre lot, yeah. But they're doing about 12, just under 13,000 square feet of revegetation.
Revenge.
What are they using, lowbush, blueberry?
Lowbush, blueberry, some oak trees, bayberry, dragonfly.
Yeah. Nice. Okay, so, go ahead, prove it. Do we have a motion for, to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Phil, second by Jackie. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Six yes, one absent.
And I do have an acknowledgement, that's an add-on.
Add-on?
Yes.
Alton, you have a signature?
John, Bridgehampton Road Race is John Abandon, which is a lot well...
What is it?
Bridgehampton Road Race, this was a site plan that was approved on August 23rd for residential structure, it's covenanted, and that's just a signature.
So, that's acknowledged with signature, that's add-on item.
24.
Great, thank you, man.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
Anthony, are you up? Anthony, you up?
Jackie's got one.
Jackie's got one. Who's this?
Yay! So happy to see you.
You can't, you can't move the lot.
I'm back.
Yes, I'm back.
Sat here for seven months waiting for you.
I know. I know, my baby's seven months old. He's doing great. It's nice to see you guys, actually, really.
Glad to have you back, Jackie.
Yeah. I just have an extension.
Okay.
Add construction.
Which one, Jackie?
Oh, I think it's number seven, seven, yeah. So, this is the one with the three small lots that got merged, and then they're splitting it into two, and they're conforming with...
Owen Flanders?
The buffers in the back, yep. So, they just need a little bit more time. They have submitted their maps and covenants, so we just have to review all of that and make sure it complies with the conditional approval.
End of seven. Okay. That's good. Motion by Jackie?
Second.
Second by Zagrely, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Six yes, one absent.
Can't you stay and do Anthony's?
But I'll, I can get through myself.
I can stay.
Do you have applicants, Anthony?
I do, actually. I have two here, as a matter of fact.
Let's do it.
All right. I'll take care of Liz, and then I'll take care of Dan.
Sounds ominous.
So, number 13, Rogers.
13, okay. Edge of Woods Road, Water...
Rogers?
Yep.
Let me know if you have anything attached. I'm always skeptical these days.
Very simple map.
It is a very simple map.
Yeah, it is a map.
And there's a rezon on there?
Yeah.
Yes, the rezon is on.
Things come smooth with this.
You did it right.
There we go. So, this is pretty straightforward, it's a two-lot subdivision in the aquifer protection overlay district on Edge of Woods Road, it's in the CR80 zoning district, and so I'm just going to go through my resolution, the findings, the applications and substantial agreement with the adopted pre-app report dated September 8th, 2016. The Health Department approved this on June 29th, 2018. Three, we had a public hearing at the pre-application stage on April 28th, 2016, it was followed by a 10-day written comment period. The comments were limited to concerns from one adjacent property owner about the loss of vegetation and the impacts on wildlife. On July 26th, 2018, we waived the final hearing and provided a 30-day written comment period where no comments were received. It's type-one action under SECPRA, and January 26th of 2017, this board issued a negative declaration. And six, the planning board finds that a proper case does not exist for requiring onsite park, and that the fee will be paid in lieu of providing the land. We received comments from the town engineer just requiring a two-inch rainfall, which is in the covenants. We received comments from the Conservation Board. Number one, the tract was within 200 feet, so we had to do 292 referral, which I did, and it's incorporated into this resolution. The two, they talk about the clearing not being accurate. The clearing line actually on the survey is in fact accurate. What they noticed was that there was an area, if you look on the aerial, that had been cleared, had subsequently revegetated. We discussed this early on the stage, in that there was an area that was revegetated, so, in fact, the clearing numbers are correct on there. So, I just wanted to mention that. They mentioned the altered slopes within the revege areas having to be redone, but I was out there, there's no reason to alter slopes in the, the revege areas. It's just going to cause more disturbance. They talk about the wire fence in the open space, or in the, in the vegetated area, but she was out there, I was out there, it's just a wire fence, there's no clearing associated with it, so there's no reason to remove it. And then, we, we are providing the 50-foot disturbance. Number seven, they mentioned the new systems for the septic. However, this property's not in the high or medium priority area, so the requirement doesn't exist for the septic system, so...
Even though it's an APOD?
It's, it's...
That doesn't make sense, does it?
Yeah, it's, they, they focus a lot on the shorelines, so, I look, believe me, if it's in, we always make the condition. We received comments from the Office of Fire Prevention, that everything was pretty straightforward. They mentioned a grade out there last comment, it says the area is not served by public water and fire hydrants, and they recommend extending the water main from Deerfield. However, the Health Department didn't require it, we had this discussion. It's quite a way to bring down public water, they have Health Department approval for onsite septic, I mean, for, for well water and septic. Tied in with that, if you look actually, oh, the next one says Trails, there was nothing. But tied in with that were referral comments from the actual fire district. We didn't receive any comments from them yet. I did speak to them, though, they're having their meeting today, and they said they did want to comment...
Do we have a form of comment, or...
We do, and I, and I do note in there that we do have their comments initially from Tied in with that, if you look, actually, oh, the next one says trails, there was nothing. But tied in with that would refer comments from the actual fire district, we didn't receive any comments from them yet. I did speak to them, though, they're having their meeting today, and they said they did want to comment. We do, and I do note in there that we do have their comments initially from the pre-app, which said that they did not have any additional fire protection required, only that if they in fact did bring in public water at some point, they would want to be involved with the site, you know, citing a hydrant and everything, so. So I just note in there that their comments are coming in today, could always, you know, come back and amend this if we need to. I did the 292 referral for the conservation board, and we'll go through their recommendations in the resolution. So I recommend approving the map, subject to some map revisions. On Lot Two, I want to show the buffer for the entire length of the property, that will account for a 12-foot wide driveway, as opposed to them showing the driveway now, we typically, you know, leave that option for a future. Identify all existing and proposed monuments, I think there's a couple of course changes that might not be noted on the map. The delivery postal house numbers, which you get from the assessor's office, in addition to the clearing calculation notation which you have on there, you should add one that talks about the 15% limitation on fertilized vegetation pursuant to 330-68 of the code, and then a notation for a declaration of covenants have been recorded with the Office of the County Clerk. Payment of the park fee in the amount of $2,500. On three here, and this is, you know, we could leave this open, or, I'd say, given the lack of public water in the Town Office of Fire Prevention's concerns regarding the distance to the nearest hydrant, which is 1,150 feet away, installation of electric fire well or cistern to the satisfaction of specifications of the fire district or the Office of Fire Prevention prior to end issuance of building permits, I think the applicant wants to discuss it with you, I know we don't have that specific recommendation, I was just trying to make sense of recommendation that we got from the fire prevention without having to make them bring in public water, I mean, it would be a burden to bring in public water for-
One of the lots already has a structure.
That's correct.
A CO.
A CO. I graded out for this reason, Dennis, is that, you know, it could be-
So at the very least, we have to, I guess it's Lot One that has a CO?
Yeah.
So it would be just Lot Two, if anything.
Yeah, it's just Lot Two. So, we'll get back to that. Covenants restrictions, no further subdivision, no lot line changes without planning board approval, again, I have the fire well or cistern just grade there, case. There shall be established and maintained a 50-foot wide naturally vegetated non-disturbance non-fertilization buffer on lots one and two as shown in the filed map, and to remain its natural state and free of any disturbance, clearing, or structures, except for the existing driveway serving Lot One and the 12-foot wide driveway serving Lot Two.
Oh, is non-fertilization monitored?
I wish I could, you know.
It's monitored through when you refinance, when you sell, when you apply for building permits.
You know, let's put it this way, the first, these buffer areas, what, you know, is, has the understory, is it in its natural state?
And deer, and deer just love that.
That's right, and once, you know, and this happened in, you know, at the Pines East or whatever it was, they just cleared out these buffers, and start putting ornamentals and everything, and now, you know, now you know when there's fertilized vegetation in there, but if they were keeping it in the natural state, as rec, there's no reason for them to do anything in there.
Yeah, the deer want to disturb the natural state.
Yeah, they just sort of- Number two, the notation or the covenant regarding the 25% limitation of clearing on each lot, the next one, the 15% limitation on fertilized vegetation, a minimum of 125-foot setback for structures on Lot One. Again, Lot One is the only lot there that would be impacted, it's really outside of the jurisdiction of the wetlands, but we just put the required setbacks in there, so that way, if they do anything, they don't have to go-
From the wetlands?
From the wetlands, yes, yes, you're absolutely right about that. Totally. Yeah, from the wetlands, and that's so they don't have to go back for a period of three years to go get a wetlands permit. The leaders and gutters, and notification of the Environment Division for any activities. Utilities underground, no new utility poles for the lots, the two-inch drainage, the retention of stormwater runoff during and after construction, and then submission of the mortgage consent applicable, Town Attorney approval of legal documents, and then submission of the Mylar prints and the paper prints for signature, and the map to be recorded within 62 days.
So Anthony, let's circle back to number three with the fire prevention.
Yeah, absolutely, because that's really the only issue, it's pretty straightforward, you know.
Oftentimes, the fire district will require a water main extension, they're not big on cisterns, I know, anymore, and even the wells, they'd rather, especially if there's a water main, I think on Deerfield.
Yeah.
They might want to say, okay, to satisfy fire prevention, will, you know, they'll require an extension of a certain number of feet.
Yeah, what I could say to you is, you know, although the district didn't say that the first time around, right, in their pre-application comments, I had that discussion with the chief, he said, "Look, I'm sorry to get anything to you for your meeting," we're meeting tonight, actually, and he, you know, will have comments, you know, tomorrow.
They may want something.
You know, which I'd alert, they may want something.
They don't want cisterns anymore, Dennis, right? They don't want well.
Yeah, they're not big on it, Liz, go ahead.
Good afternoon, members, Liz Vale, Farrell Fritz, 50 Station Road, Watermill, New York, nice to see all of you. So, in April of 2016, there was a referral from the Southampton Fire District, they wrote, "Dear Mr. Finerty, please be advised that the Southampton Fire District has reviewed the subdivision pre-application for David and Christine Rogers on 790 Edge of Woods Road, Watermill, Town of Southampton. As this is a minor subdivision, the Commissioners have no recommendation at this time. In the future, county water, if county water is brought into the subdivision, the Commissioners would like to be consulted as to hydrant placement. No additional requirements for fire protection are required, as long as all new, all applicable New York State and Town of Southampton, building and fire codes have been met. If there are any questions, please contact me at your earliest convenience." The issue is that the water main is more than 1,000 feet away, it would be really cost prohibitive for a two-lot subdivision to extend it to this lot, we're creating one extra lot, and we're asking you not to require us to extend the water main. The first recommendation from the fire district doesn't have any recommendations with respect to fire protections from 2016, it's based on the preliminary approval, and nothing has changed since then, there's been no change in circumstances that I think would warrant all of a sudden having to install a fire well or a cistern, or extend a water main at this point. So we're asking you to please waive that particular condition, or not impose it upon us, as we're only creating one lot here.
I think we have to wait to hear from the fire department, though.
You did, in my opinion, it's right here.
That was 2016 on Lot One, but-
No, that was for this subdivision application.
Yes, it wasn't the subdivision, but I have to, or know that I reached out to the chief, to try, I always try to help, to try to see if I get the comments before the meeting, he wasn't able to do it, they're putting on the agenda, but I said, I specifically said in my email, "These were your comments back in 2016," to which his response was, "We want to provide you with comments."
You've got it.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
So they want to provide with-
So they do want to do the review to provide the comments.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
You know, that's-
Well, so how are we going to handle today?
Well, do you want us an open-ended resolution? What do they say, extend? We might benefit you to wait two weeks. If they tell us, if they typically tell us, "Bring public water and put a hydrant in front of your property," we'll find a compromise solution.
Yeah, because it's so cost prohibitive for water.
But, they might say, "Extend to 200 feet," or the cost of a well or a cistern.
Right, how much are those? Those are like 30 grand.
The other side is, they may keep up with their same comments that they had before, you know, that's-
Right, they might.
That's cheaper than replacing the house if it burns down. If there's a fire.
Hopefully, we have insurance, right?
But what you could do, Liz, is, look, the resolution is largely done, if, we're not at a-
Wait two weeks.
If you can, because we're going to go past our action deadline.
All right, so we'll consent to-
If you could just give me an action deadline to the 27th, and then we can-
We have to pay for that?
No, no, because I'm asking for it, so it's- No, no, it's when it's us, you don't have to pay.
Boy, you don't want to pay for anything. Not anything, sir. Okay, so then, so then, at the request of the applicant, do we have a motion for two-week extension to the action deadline?
Motion.
Rogers, motion by Zuccarelli, second by Lanier, all in favor, I oppose abstentions, six yes, and hopefully we'll get this, everything else is done, right?
Yeah, everything else is good, great, it wasn't-
Well, I mean, I was concerned about the district's for Lot One, as long as you say that the setbacks are to the wetlands, that's fine.
Yeah.
And then, because Lot One already has a CO and it's already developed, so I don't want to really coven it, Lot One, it doesn't impress to me. And then the other issue was the, that was it, that was my only issue.
Okay, anything that comes up?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Who else do you have here?
I have Tim McCully.
Tim?
Tim, which one?
Sea Takoe Estates, that's- Let me know if you have the-
Eleven.
There should be a pre-app report there.
Yes, the maps are here, and-
Good.
Everything is working today.
We just did thirteen.
We did thirteen.
Oh, that's, that's indicated New York State DEC regulated wetlands.
Oh, wetlands, okay.
So you know this property, we looked at it, it's on South Bay Avenue in Eastport, actually, this-
Oh, yeah.
This property actually goes back 20-something years as a file with the four-lot subdivision right here. It's located in the R40 zoning district, that whole property, actually, that whole area from the level duck farm, back in the day. Yeah, that's right. So they're looking to do a four-lot subdivision, that's in the R40 zoning district, they're showing the four lots clustered towards the road with a common driveway, and then an area of open space that covers the wetlands and a portion of the upland area. I note on the first page of my report that this lot was created as a minor subdivision back in 1984, and at that time, they imposed two conditions, one was no overhead utilities, which is pretty standard, will be in this one, and then they imposed a 50-foot wide strip of land lying immediately along the northwest side of East Creek. I was looking at this, it makes no difference what that buffer said, the entire area is going to be covered with a conservation easement, so it's irrelevant what the buffer did back then, because the area's going to be covered with a conservation easement, so. So they submitted a standard plan, yield plan showing four lots, I do note that the average lot size is incorrect on the map, but that's just a minor thing. The flag lots, actually, in this particular case, are in fact one and a half times the applicable area, and exclusive of the flag strip, so it meets that design criteria. And the park requirement for this subdivision would be 8,712 square feet, they show a larger area, and it's therefore in conformance, they do show the planned residential development plan, the cluster plan, which is the map you're looking at, and that's the one they're moving forward with. The map does not indicate the ownership of the open space, and if it's going to be placed in homeowners association, then the conservation easement would need to cover the entire open space area, not just the area of the wetlands. And then, I note on there, the plan board notes, "The zoning district on the subdivision map for the cluster plan is incorrect, it's R40, not R20, but they're applying R20 setbacks, so I think that's where maybe the mistake came in." It's a minor review, it's an unlisted action, everything conforms with the requirements under zoning, I do know under conformance of zoning, it's really not a big deal, but this property, and then there's an adjacent property, and Tim will explain, he said, there's this strip of land that, I don't know if it's incorporated into the adjacent property, or if it's actually a separate strip of land, it was just confusing on the town's JIS, but Tim's already looked into it, so. Conformance with the comprehensive plan, in the extent, to the extent that this is a cluster plan that preserves the minimum open space and conforms with zoning. The park fee for this project will be total, as of today, could change, it's $6,386.44 per lot, or $25,545.76. It's also possible to incorporate parkland into the open space, or as a separate trail easement to satisfy the requirement. It's not subject to loan out for workforce housing, we had a public hearing, and the public comment was limited to one nearby property owner who just had some general questions. We did our referrals, we have the town engineer, and town engineer has a couple pages of comments relating to the common driveway detail, I'm not going to go through it, we'll let the applicant go through that. The conservation board also provided comments, they go through a lot of the history, they talk about the wetland setbacks, the one important thing about this here, they did note that this was actually really good of the conservation board, on proposed Lot Four, they just adjust the lot line a little bit, it will prevent the need from establishing a covenant buffer on that lot, so do that, and we don't have to burden the property with a covenant buffer, it'll just incorporate the open space instead. This property is in the town's high priority water quality improvement zone, so those new systems will be required for this. As proposed, to be dedicated, they're asking about the ownership of the open space, there's a 10-foot wide pedestrian access that they talk about, they don't like it dissecting the open space, but I would say that this is not an open space parcel in the traditional sense that's being located adjacent to other open space, essentially, this is sort of like any other wetlands parcel, and that a wetlands parcel would have a conservation buffer that accounts for a four-foot wide, not 10-foot wide, but a four-foot wide path, wherever it would be located, whatever makes more sense, you know, so.
Are we going to delineate the wetlands, perhaps, with a split rail fence or some-
Well, you mean the open space?
Yeah.
We certainly could, I didn't put it in here, but, yes, it's probably something I missed. Southampton Office of Fire Prevention, ultimately, they said they have no requirements or recommendations, as there's public water and a hydrant. Trails Advisory Board, let me just sum it up for you, what they're recommending and what they're asking for is public access to the creek through the property, and not really part of a larger trail system, you know, I've looked at this, I felt the applicant to look into it, as opposed to, you know, paying the fee, but I don't know that this board could require public access through the open space.
Can't require it.
So, you know, that's, that's, that's that.
Oh, wait a minute, they don't want people walking across their property to go to the creek, right? No, probably they envisioned a strip along the railroad tracks, and then connecting to the creek, is most practical. If you looked at the area-
This area of the creek, though, is not ideal for public access, quite frankly.
There's an aerial here, right past the aerial is a map, but it's kind of broken up.
I don't have anything.
But I don't know how productive that is.
I don't, do you have another aerial, a map? I don't have, it's not coming up, not on my-
There it is, it's on the left-hand side of the picture.
I did have it, and it just disappeared, yeah, okay, that's good, thank you. So what were you just saying?
Where's the other trail that they go?
Yeah, along the railroad, you see the railroad track?
Yeah, yeah.
So if they were going to do a trail, access to the creek, they'd probably carve a strip along the railroad right away, and then you'd be at the creek, but I'm hearing it's not much of a creek, right?
No, it's not particularly this area, the side of the creek.
It's wet.
It's, it's just, there's not a lot of water there, and then it's blocked off, I mean, it gets better as you go further, you know, so. The Eastport Fire District, the only concern is that the common driveway be maintained as required, 20-foot wide, they've had numerous problems in the past with plantings within those areas, so we will make sure that the driveways are really clear. The New York State DEC indicated that a wetlands permit may be needed from the agency, Health Department said they have not received any applications, we haven't gotten any comments from the town trustees or the CAC, and so then I just have the recommendations. Number one, our preferences for the cluster plan, and just note the correct zoning district on the map. Lot Five needs to be labeled as open space parcel, and the ownership needs to be indicated, if it is to be placed in a homeowners association, then the conservation easement needs to be expanded to include the whole piece, not just the wetlands, and then, incidentally, with this four-foot wide path that's up to the board, I don't know if that's the most ideal location, I don't think even, you know, Tim really looked at it, I don't know that down the middle is the best location for the path, there might be better opportunities in another location to get into some deeper water or better access to the creek, so I recommend just leaving it out, that the area would be entitled to a four-foot wide path to the water, is what we normally do with conservation, but, you know, we could, we could look into that. The applicant could consider dedicating the open space to the town, or establishing a public access easement per the Trails Advisory, and save themselves 25,000, but that's at their discretion. We will do a 292 referral to the Conservation Board, this is where I note that if they adjust the lot line for Lot Four, then there will be no need to establish a covenant buffer on that lot. I note that the prior covenant regarding no overhead utility lines will be maintained, the prior 50-foot covenant buffer will be replaced with a conservation easement that covers the entire area, compliance with the engineer, the Office of Fire Prevention. Clarification regarding the adjacent property ownership, which I spoke to the board about, the alternative waste treatment, which will be required for the subdivision, common driveway serving Lots One through Four, it should be noted also as a utility and driveway easement, and it only needs to be 20-foot wide with 10 feet on each side, and then, go to the final application, I'm sorry, that's a total lie, think, oh, no, but it's a minor subdivision, I'm right, it's a minor subdivision, so they could actually go to file, they'll lie to you, they go to the final application with Health Department.
And when were the wetlands last flagged?
December 19th, 2017.
Wait, within the year?
Yeah.
Tim, did you wish to be heard on the matter?
For the record, Timothy Housman-Cully, 41 meeting house lane, for the applicant. I just have a couple of comments on the recommendations. This water in the back, in the wetlands area in the back, that they're going about making a trail to, it goes nowhere, it just stops in the back, and I've had this problem before, especially there was one in Remsenburg where the town insisted on doing that, they did it, they put a bench down there, and what happened, the kids went down there, they started bonfires, firecrackers, beer, the whole thing, and it became a mess.
Sounds like fun.
My client does not want to give up that and put a trail back there, but we're going to covenant the whole thing, and he'll retain ownership. As far as the lot across adjacent, you're talking about across the water?
Yes.
Okay, across the water, the map shows that it's owned by Elaine Canis, which is correct, and I was involved in that property, what they did was, they have three or four houses on that large parcel of property, and except for some building envelopes around the houses, they sold the development rights to the town, so maybe that's where the problem's coming in, but it's actually still in the ownership of the Canises, John and Elaine own that property.
That's good, because the question that I have is related to whether the town had owned it or anything.
Yeah, they have, they have a conservation easement on the whole property, except for building, a few building envelopes around the existing structures. As far as adjusting the lot line that Marty or the Conservation Board wanted, we've already undertaken to do that, we can do that easily, so we have no problem with that. And I think that's basically it, we've done the 20, the two 20-foot flags for that property, and so, we'll have a 20-foot road that's shared by everybody, and it'll, there's a little, the engineer is saying it has to be 18 feet wide, but the fire department wants it 20, so we'll make it 20, so that they're satisfied with that.
And it'll have a maintenance agreement?
Pardon me?
Have a maintenance agreement?
Oh, yeah, well, oh, yeah, we'll have to have a common maintenance agreement and so forth, and instead of having the two front lots on the road have access to that road, we'll have all four lots, we'll share the one common access out to the road, because the railroad's there and so forth, it just makes a better plan. I think that's all I have.
I mean, that whole issue with the trail thing, that's, that's up to you.
Yeah.
You don't have to make that decision now, otherwise it's a park fee.
I thought we was throwing the money out there, we was putting it in there, it discourages people.
Did they raise the per lot?
It's, it's, it's based, it's, when you're doing it, not on the 1, $2,500 fee, it's based on an assessment, so that's why River Circle Farm was 25,000 per lot at the time, this area, the neighborhood assessment brings it to 6,500 per lot, or whatever it was there, it's all interactive online. It's all interactive online.
Yeah, just for the record, you know, this subdivision, I wasn't involved in it, but it's been going on and off. It's since 1995 or 1991. I think there was even some conditional approvals of this map. Not in this particular configuration, but it's been around for a while. So hopefully, we're coming to the finish line. That's all.
Thank you, Tim. We've motioned to adopt the report?
Motion.
Motion by Jackie, second by Blaney. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? You have six yes.
Okay, thank you. I have Wayne's here, so let me just go to six real quick. Six, this is, I don't know if I put it on there. This is the property in Hampton Bays. You did a subdivision, Capital One Bank. They built the new Capital One in Hampton Bays, just to the east of Carvel. And then the old Capital One building is still on the site. So if you look at the aerials, you'll see the new building, the new Capital One. This is the old.
The old one?
Yeah. So what they're proposing is a retail building here. And I have the maps. They should be on there on this property. It's 7,300 square feet. It's going to be an Autozone.
Automobile?
It would be like auto parts and sales.
Well, let's see what type of building.
Is it a space? That's so pretty.
He's not happy.
No, because I thought.
Why couldn't we get an In-N-Out Burger?
So there's a site plan there. This is just to schedule the pre-submission conference, which I'm going to recommend we do for October 11. But, you know, I have met with them on a few occasions.
Just like a bank.
Yeah, this will be the new retail building, actually. Just to give you a nice sense of the direction they're going. They're showing a hardy plank material. I met with them. They rolled out a plan. It was a sort of a franchise architecture. I said, that's not going to work. They actually ripped up the plan on the spot, rolled out a second one. I made some comments and then they sort of came in with something that I could comment on. And we'll put a pre-submission conference report together, but.
So that's.
Robust discussion about the sign.
Sign. That's the top one?
Tell me it's not neon.
And those are the types of issues we'll address. Yeah, no. So I just want to schedule the pre-submission conference.
What is going to happen with the drive-through? That will become.
I should have said that. It's actually being repurposed for another bank with a new drive-through that will be in there. So it's going to be another bank.
Do you know which one?
I don't know. They didn't say in the application.
There'll be a bank and an order zone in the?
In that property, correct. And the future, the future, the subdivision that created these two lots with the new Capital One Bank does have a future cross-access. So that will be part of the plan here. So I recommend scheduling the pre-submission conference for October 11.
Very good. Do we motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jackie, second by Zuccarelli. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Six yes.
The rest of my stuff is very easy, I promise you.
Okay.
Number two, Fisher Organization. The Fisher Organization is a two-lot subdivision. Fisher, it's called Fisher Organizations, number two on the agenda. It's R-10 zoning. It's on Flanders Road in Flanders. It's east of the Big Duck. It's got an existing house on there. I'm actually recommending deeming the application incomplete. It's not a major project, but, and I, you know, I like to get people complete, but it's missing a lot of mapping requirements. So I would just recommend it to be incomplete.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Robin?
Second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Six yes. You've got Hirsch and Pearson?
Hirsch and Pearson should also be attached.
Number three.
Hirsch and Pearson, they're part of a subdivision. Actually, I forgot the name of the subdivision. It's two lots in a subdivision. If you look at the map.
Ross and Estates.
That's it, Ross and Estates. So if you look at the map that's attached, they're trying to do a lot line modification to create some very strange lot lines there. Do you see that?
Oh, yeah.
So the person who bought the property to the south there, they bought it with all these encroachments. There's a swimming pool sitting three feet from the property line. Right now, the property line is straight, just completely straight. So there's encroachments, you know, some landscaping areas, and the pool is three feet from the property line. So they're trying to do it. However, the previous subdivision also had clearing limitations specific for each property, which they didn't address in this map. I also believe that there's a better way to do this. So it's incomplete, and I'm going to meet with the applicant to see if I could walk them into it.
Re-jiggle it, yeah.
Reconfigure that a little bit. So it's just incomplete.
Do we motion?
Motion.
Motion. Motion by Zuccarelli, second by Phil. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Yes.
And then eight, Jaeger Property. This is a two-lot subdivision, re-approved already. They're just trying to get their act together, so they're asking for their first 90-day extension, which will bring it to November 19, 2018.
Motion. Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Six yes.
We did 11. 12, Old Stables at Spianx. I don't know if you guys remember this. This was a property that used to, it was under Kay Downs maybe years ago. There was a subdivision, I believe, that. The aerials, I don't know if everything's attached there. It's just north of the railroad tracks there.
Yeah, this is next to the one of those maps.
That's correct. So this we did a pre-application report for. It's a density incentive plan. So they have a property that has a yield of six lots. They actually came in with a nine-lot plan, and they're going to be asking the town for some development rights in order to do the affordable housing. But it's going to be a nine-lot plan, six-lot yield. The three units would be affordable. Somebody tried to go to the town for a change of zone on this for 84 apartments. The town sort of didn't do anything, so they're back now to do their subdivision.
Is it the green?
Oh, sorry.
Which one?
Oh, yeah, it's the orange here, big property.
The orange.
This is right up the road from the big Spianx Affordable Housing.
Yes, yes.
It's on the other side of the track.
It's on the other side. So all they wanted to do is their pre-app is expired, and it's already had the one extension. So they're just looking for a waiver of the policy to renew the pre-application report.
When was the last?
Yeah, when did we do it?
We did it in, it was 15. I think we issued the report. Brings to 16. It's up to this board.
I think we're going to do it, ask for a hearing.
You want to just?
We'd like to get a public hearing.
Okay.
I think we use two years as our threshold and then.
Yeah.
Especially since there's a lot of activity in North Phillips.
Okay, so then did your, sort of resubmission of the?
Resubmission of the pre-app.
That's no problem.
With associated fees.
No problem. So we could do that, then. There's really no action fee to pay.
Okay. No action?
No action.
And you have 2:30.
Number 15, that's the Farrell Building. John Bennett has asked again to be put off. Extension of our action deadline until September 27. Just so you know, I told his associate yesterday when she came to the counter, I said, sure, project. If you don't want to move forward, that's fine, but tell John that I said that after this, if he doesn't have anything certain, ask to pull this indefinitely so we don't keep doing this. So I will just say this will probably be the last time we'll extend this until like the 27th. And then after that, he's got to withdraw or put it on hold.
Good.
Do we motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jackie?
Second.
Second by Zuccarelli. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? You have six yes, one absent. You've got number 19, Menzer Fenchel.
Menzer Fenchel, remember this, the old lawnmower business right here?
Yeah, the plumbing.
The plumbing. So I actually have the maps that he signed today, which is at the end here. But they, having some siding and some roof issues on the property, and if you drive by, you can't miss it. So actually, I just had a, put a quick resolution together to modify the original approval from June 28, 2018, to include the re-siding of the building with a gray composite material similar to what's there, and to re-roof it with a new metal roof similar to what's there, a non-reflective. It's gray and slate. So I just wanted to add that in there too.
So we're modifying?
Modifying the approval from Menzer Fenchel to include the re-siding and actually the new roof.
Very good. Do we motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by Robin. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions?
And then real quick on 21 Woodland Pines. This subdivision, this board has been doing covenant amendments. There's, you know, 20 of them sitting in there. So this one is for Lot 22, which is at 37 Whopper Pool Lane. So they're asking for a covenant amendment. They submitted the fee along with the actual draft covenants. So I'm just recommending, because we don't need a public hearing, that we approve the covenant amendment that would allow them to go from 40% to 50%, subject to approval of the documents and filing of the documents and the submission of a revedge plan to bring it into compliance with the 50%.
Is that because?
It predates, yeah, with the town's aquifer protection overlay district.
So they have more clearing?
So they get more. I will tell you that the map that they gave me, where it shows the revedge area, shows it being brought into compliance with the 40%. But I don't know, but they did ask for the 50% and we've done every other one in the subdivision.
I just have a, you just reminded me of something. I have a totally unrelated question. Do either of you remember who had Dario's Landscaping? Do you remember that one? That's yours?
That's me.
Do you know that they're putting a huge addition onto that building?
No, I did not know that. Why, thank you.
Where is that you approved?
The old roadhouse down on North Sea Road.
Yeah, but was it, I have to look back to look. I don't remember where we approved it.
I don't think that was part of the approval.
Oh, I thought it was.
Was it? I'm sorry.
I'll take a look. I don't remember.
I heard there was an addition in the back.
Oh, in the back, there is an addition.
Is there?
100% right.
Okay. All right, just wanted to.
He's going to double check.
I am going to double check, but there was an addition in the back. But Woodland Pines, just to do the covenant amendment to allow it to go to 50%.
Very good. Do we motion?
Well, hold on, Jackie had a question.
No, 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 no. I just want to know what year the town increased clearing restrictions in an APOD.
It was.
89.
Nine.
So these are the maps that fell between 83 and 89?
Correct.
Dozens.
I found one that came after that with more restrictions.
APOD, Dennis?
Yeah.
Jeez.
So that was just that one. And then to acknowledge the signature for Menzer Fenchel.
Okay, has that been signed, Captain? Is that one you gave me, Fred?
Yeah, I have it here.
Yeah. I have 23's acknowledged with signature. Yep.
I wonder why you were that clear?
I got a lot more to go.
No.
That was just a.
Do you have any civilians here? Look like you're scarred too badly.
No.
She's tough.
Oh, I have to, we're taking on.
Yes, please sign that. And I'm going to just do my two applicants here in order. So my first one is 17, which is a sign for Dale Rifkin, also known as Trigkin Holden. It's a sign that's at the beginning of a flag lot, Butter Lane.
On Butter.
Yeah, there's multiple tenants, so it's one of those menu signs. Has the name 269, which identifies the property, and then the Farrell, which is the building.
This is the, this is the one on the North Highway?
Yeah, so you saw this as a ZBA referral because the location could need setbacks. Beginning of the flag lot here, and that's the building there. You approved that building a while ago.
Oh, this is the one on Butter Lane, huh?
On Butter Lane. And so this is the menu sign, but that's the detail. And you, at the time, the ZBA decision had recommended that they do a gooseneck for the lighting. They would prefer to have the lighting to be recessed in the inside. If you don't mind coming up and explaining it. The ARB has indicated approval as they proposed it, but you indicated you wanted exterior goosenecks, so.
Exterior goosenecks.
You.
So is this like the interior lighting that Farrell has on its building?
It's not interior. It doesn't come from behind the sign.
Just state your name for the record.
For the record, I'm Susan Byerly from Dewey's Planning.
Just a little detail.
Oh, you have it, okay.
Yeah.
So if you look at, this is a cross-section of the sign as if you were looking down. And if you look at each post, there's a round circle, which is an LED sort of trim light that's concealed by a flange, a stainless steel flange. So it will glow across the top of the words, but it won't be behind them.
So it's external illuminating?
Yes.
It is.
That's correct. It's like a wash across the letters.
So if you'd like that design?
Works for me.
Yeah, it's a very contemporary sign.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so our action is to.
To approve the sign as.
Can you just indicate the blue that you're using? Give us a PMS color on the blue so Claire has it for her record.
I can give that to Claire, sure.
Yeah. I'll put it right in the resolution. Great. Want to approve the sign?
Very good. Do we motion? Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by Zuccarelli. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? We have six yes.
And then my next, last applicant is number 20, United Artists.
Number 20, hey.
So this was to be considered an admin approval through the planning department. So Kyle, we received the application. We did referrals to the Fire Marshal, ARB. ARB has approved it as proposed.
Moving? They're moving? They don't know where it's moving?
No, they're not. Yes, so they're not moving. This is to propose two dormers on the building to approve.
Why are they doing?
Why? Architecturally, to approve it, but mostly to put a sign up. You know?
Are they allowed to? No.
There should be a dormer to facilitate a sign process. In Hampton Bays. You're in Hampton Bays. And Mary have.
Is that considered a rooftop?
No, because it would be a side of the building. So just like the United Artists is in the middle.
Right.
Which provides the sign. You would put dormers on either end and you could put a sign in that.
They're not going to put offices in there.
In the dormers? For mice.
For small people. What kind of sign?
What kind of signs? The signage we're going to hold off on. The signage we're gonna hold off on. We don't, we don't know the age or what'd be going in there yet, so.
Autozone.
For the autozone?
Yeah, autozone.
Okay, so what I wanna explain to you is, the second, I think the second sheet is the actual...
It's purely decorative, then, it's just a frame to hold a sign.
Right, but we wanted to enhance the building, too. That was the point. So Kyle considered this, and he thought the idea was good, but once he saw the plan, you can see that the dormers are centered over the second series of windows in the bottom, and he felt, in the little rendering I've given you, that it's better if they were centered in the center of the roof line. So there's...
From the dorm, from this other dormer?
Yeah, so, yeah, that idea, too. So, so the app, its preference is what he's proposed, which is the two end units, which you see in this plan. Kyle is recommending, and he did this little rendering, so.
Which one? He's recommending the top?
The top one.
The top one.
Yeah, the bottom one is the proposal. So the applicant's here, I wanted him, you know, obviously, we hear from him to see what he thinks.
Makes more sense, Kyle's.
So, and Kyle's looking at it from a perspective of...
Symmetry and proportion.
The building itself. And, but the applicant's here, once you hear what he has to say, we've already given the app.
But it's still not, it's still not symmetrical, though.
Kyle's?
Yeah, well, it's, one is the thirty and a half feet from the edge of the building, the other one is thirty-eight feet.
Because of the actual roof lines are not...
Oh, they're not, okay.
...magical either, so that's the, you can sit up here, actually, just to speak. Just make sure you stay up here because of the...
Yeah, you need the microphone.
Microphone.
Okay.
Indentify yourself.
Walter Morris, President of WDP Enterprises, which owns the building, so effectively, I'm the owner. Yeah, I came to planning early on to figure out how we could provide a little bit of signage to my tenants, because if you're familiar with the building, there's just maybe six-inch high by three feet wide signs that sit under the roof line. And what Claire explained to me is, in the town of Southampton, you're not allowed to have...
Roof signs?
Roof signs. So I didn't design the building, I purchased the building fifteen years ago, and we've never had any change, changeover on tenants, but we had a tenant that went out of business, and for ten months, we've been showing the property, and everyone's question is, where are we gonna put a sign? So it's been difficult. I spoke to all of my other tenants, they said, "Well, we've been here a while, people know we're here, but yes, it would be nice to have some signage." So I started looking into, how can we do this? And in talking with Claire, we thought if we added a dormer similar to the United Artists' dormer in the center, we could create the space for a sign and also make the building aesthetically more pleasing from the road. So that's where we came in. We designed something, we went to the Architectural Review Board, they liked it, they approved it, and I guess the Director of Planning said, "Well, I think it would look a little bit better this way." I said, "Uh-oh, I'm sort of caught in between both groups." So I can live with either one. I guess my preference would be if, if we're gonna go with, or if the board is gonna go with what Kyle's recommending, I'm just hoping that if my future tenant says, "Well, we can't live with that, because it's our sign and it's not gonna be over our store," that maybe I have the right to shift it over in that scenario only, but I believe I can get it done either way, which is what I found out earlier this morning. I believe...
You would shift the dormer, once it's concerned?
No.
No, no. We're gonna have to go in for a building permit...
Right.
For this dormer. Before I do that, I have to have this approved by my tenant. I've gotten a verbal that either way will be okay.
Can I ask you, how many names are going to be on this dormer?
Well, for the one that you're looking at to the east, it'll just be one. That's clear. So this is the way the building looks if you're looking at it from the store.
And that tenant is whoever you rented to?
Yes, that'll just be their sign.
And their signage requirements, you know that?
Right, I've explained to them, and they understand that they will have to make a application for their sign, and it'll have to be in accordance with, with town of Southampton requirements. Now, originally, I was hoping to just do this dormer, because we're really just looking for the sign, but in discussions with Claire, she said, "Well, you have an opportunity to add some balance to the shopping center from the street aesthetically, it'll look much better to do both." So I'm willing to do that. Now, it's a little bit tricky here, and...
They have multiple tenants on that sign.
I have three tenants over on this side, and I have not discussed that with them yet, because nothing's approved, and I don't wanna open a can of worms. I guess what Mr. Collins is recommending is that this dormer would also be shifted to right in between these two stores. See, on this store, it would be easy to identify just one tenant. If we put it over two stores, I'll have my work cut out for me a little bit. However, it's my building, I can maintain some control over it, it would be nice, but this is a future discussion. You know, if all three tenants wanna have three small signs on it, can we make it look right aesthetically? Maybe with smaller signs?
I doubt it. Have you ever thought of a monument sign?
It's not an automatic that it would be approved. It's a very busy intersection. I mean...
What is it, Claire, twenty-foot setback?
It would be, yeah.
And that's not available.
But you're gonna get all your...
All their parking, I mean, there's no, there's no islands in that property.
There's no availability for that.
Yeah, so...
But in either case, this, what I believe we're presenting, whether we go with what the Architectural Review Board said, "We like it, let's do that," or what Mr. Collins would prefer, I think it gives me an opportunity to make the center look nicer, provide some signage, which of course will not be approved until an application is made for that. And also, you know, when I do it, it gives me a chance to spiff up things a little bit. We're gonna be building two dormers when we paint those, I'm gonna do some other little repairs and painting. I, I think it's hopefully a win-win for everybody, for my retailers.
That's a consideration. If you put a dormer between the two stores, it's gonna warrant additional signage clutter, visual clutter.
I control that, though.
But originally, you wanted it over one store, and supposedly just have one sign over.
This sign here on the left would still not be the easiest. It would just be easy because Bay Liquors is the tenant of these two stores, it's over their store, it would make sense that it would...
Be Bay Liquors.
Be Bay Liquors, but that doesn't mean that these two tenants are not gonna say, "Well, what about me?" So I was gonna have to deal with this down the road anyway. It's very possible, none of the three tenants will be overly excited about putting their sign there. They've both been, all three of them have been there a long time, they have established businesses, and they're happy. So anything I'm doing here is gonna hopefully make them happier.
Well, Bay Liquors has the most visibility, they're in the corner...
They do.
As you make the turn on Springville.
They do. This is, this is the person who has the problem.
Absolutely.
Because you can't see him at all when you're driving west. And even when you're driving east, it's, it's hidden. So this is who I really need to take care of, but I do agree with Claire's recommendation that if you're doing it, do two of them, it'll look nice. This, I'll worry, you know, I'd like to, from my perspective, worry about the problem of who gets the sign later. That's a good problem. It could be one of them, it could be two little signs. Certainly, I don't wanna do anything that's not gonna look correct.
I think once you have multiple stores in there, on that one sign, you're gonna lose the whole aesthetic of that dormer sign.
Which, which I don't wanna do, and that's not the point of it. I mean, we also have a tenant here who has just a little marker, but...
Where are those little markers? Have you thought about?
Yeah, I have, I have pictures that I could show you.
They're right underneath, right?
There's, I guess there's really no other way to do it.
You know, no, do you know the, Dennis, what's the shopping center opposite the pizza place in West? The one that was redone by...
Oh, you mean where Goldberg's is?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And it was redone.
One hundred and thirty-nine.
He did a very nice, he had multiple tenants.
Yeah, Melrose. I do like what he did.
He did, and then he had very nice signage, he put in a new, he really upgraded that center.
I do, I like what he did. I, I noticed that, I actually took a picture of the shopping center across the street with the tower and the mansard roof, sort of to start with this procedure, but if you can understand from my perspective, to think about doing what they did on the other side of the street, you're talking about, it's gonna take over a year, right, to design it, to get it approved, to go through the process. I don't have that ability at this time, but I could see doing something like that down the road as opportunities present.
Yeah, well, it gives your other tenants greater visibility...
I understand.
As opposed to, I mean, I think you can have two key...
But right now, what I have is I have a tenant on the east side of the building that might have been there certainly way before I owned the building, and retailing, as far as people who sell product, has gotten very, very challenging because of online purchasing. It's not the first property I own, this is going on all over the country. Retail shopping centers, to a certain extent, you have to have very flexible landlords who repurpose them for whether it be residential, or restaurant, or fitness, but selling product is, is changing.
Do you have a name for this center?
Well, it was, it did have a name, which was United Artists Movie Theater Shopping Center when I bought it.
You've never thought about changing that name and putting up a sign?
Is the United Artists staying?
I don't have the ability to, because they control that, the name of the shopping center through the lease.
Are they staying?
And as far as if they're staying, they have a little bit of time left on their lease, but they haven't been open to discussing an extension. The movie theater business is also challenging right now. So people like myself, I can't speak for them, but I can speak for me, we try to get ahead of this as quick as we can...
Yeah.
And start looking for tenants, and...
Good ground, right?
You know, this is a four thousand square foot vacancy, I can tell you that since the Dollar Store went out, some of the other tenants are suffering a little bit, because all that traffic is now not there.
Right, right.
So from my perspective, this is a very expensive renovation to get a facade sign, but it's what I have to do to put in a tenant, and also hopefully to help me down the road, and rather than let the building, what's the word, fester?
Right.
You, you bring it up and you, you try your best.
Yeah.
So I just went through this on a shopping center in East Islip, it was a long haul, and we're doing very well with it. I have a, you know, I have a couple of these where, I haven't had vacancies in fifteen years, and this year, I had four vacancies.
Yeah.
So they're, they're all full, but you better be willing to invest money and invest time and, and do a really good job. And, I hate to say it, you better be ready to take a lot less rent, because the pressure on rent is downward, because the pressure that retailers aren't looking for space.
Yeah.
That's right.
Restaurants are looking, gyms are looking, but those create different problems with sanitary and with parking and with...
So, I'm sorry, can we, I know, I wish, I wish we had some time, but we, you know, we put it up to the board. What do you think?
I think the dormers are good, but I don't think that you have to have, you could have multiple names on them, if you're just, for your private...
That's a definitely, you know, they are entitled to multiple names, but there's gonna be a restriction on that, because ARB is gonna look for, you know, it's to look proper, you can't have a big sign. You know, the sign has to look proper in the dormer.
Well, I...
What's the surface area? Do, yeah.
It'll match, it'll match the rest of the building, which is a hardy plank.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, what's the surface of the signage area where there's gonna be letters?
Again, there's no, there's no proposed sign. This is not a proposed sign.
Right, because that has, that has its own permitting process that has to be accomplished.
Government, there's a code.
If you want to review it, besides, you know, if they got a CO for the dormers, that would just go to the ARB. If you wanna review it, you could put that as a condition, that you'd wanna review any future signs on the dormers.
Well, you know, until Dennis pointed it out, Kyle's recommendation, they're not equidistant from the center.
Because the sizes of the two wings are not the same.
They're probably in the rate, same ratio. They're probably centered over both appendages.
Right, I had designed it so they would be equal distance off the ends.
From the end.
Because you're never gonna really get a good view of this from straight on, because you're driving by. I think it looks good both ways.
Kyle's looking at it as three distinct nodes, center node, UA, and then the two wing nodes, and he's, his feeling is to get the dormer centered on all four.
Right, and the ARB, I brought that up with them, and they said, they, they preferred it this way architecturally, and I just said, "Oh, boy, I'm..."
Which way? Which way?
The way it's...
The proposed.
The way it's drawn. This is what the ARB wanted.
I like the proposed.
And I just said, "Oh, boy, you know, I don't wanna get caught in between both."
That's why there's the board.
Yeah.
So you're the one who's gonna decide.
Let's refer to the ARB. I don't have a problem with it.
I like the proposed.
Yeah, I think he should have the choice.
I think he should have the choice, also. We should be encouraging him to be able to rent this location, and as long as he's keeping the character, I don't think one is so offensive to the other. The way you proposed it is good. And then you won't have that trouble with a liquor store, you know, it'll be right over there.
Claire, I'm, guys, I'm okay either way.
We wanna make sure you get it rented.
We very rarely hear that in this board. I'm gonna tell you that right now.
Oh, we might have to be back in front of this board again at some point.
As proposed, do you wanna say anything about the signs? Do you want review of the signs?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
One thing, if I can, if, are you gonna put additional restrictions over and above the restrictions that are currently existing on the signs? Because I can't rent that's...
No. No, they work, they work within the design guidelines. They'll go on the recommendations of the ARB.
Okay, because I can't build these dormers and get these tenants in unless they know they're gonna be able to have a sign, but they, but it's gonna be within the code.